We'll call a meeting to order. Bill won't be here, he's on vacation. Mr. Sampson won't be here, he's on vacation. So, the rest of us are all accounted for. Would you please stand and if so inclined, join us as we say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in its power, in its judicial legitimacy.
Quizzing you folks, we didn't have anything else to add to the agenda. So, I would like someone to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll approve. Second.
Katie?
Yep.
On the motion. Rebecca on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Schedule presenters, we begin with Principal Hodges, going to make a presentation on redefining ready.
Good evening. This summer Superintendent Sampson came and asked if we wanted to be a part of the first cohort of redefining ready in Minnesota, and I said sure, not knowing really what that was. So, this fall, we went to our first session, and we found out that redefining ready is really a way for us to define with some research-based metrics, kids that are college-ready and/or career-ready. So, that's kind of what the purpose of this whole thing is. Let's see. There you go, okay. So, redefining ready is, comes out of the superintendent, National Superintendent's Association. And, the premise behind it is basically that, for many years now, we've been defining the quality of our schools and the quality of our student performance based on really state standardized tests. And, we all know that there's a lot more to that, to students being ready for college and ready for careers than, other than just standardized testing. So, what they did was they went out and looked at some research that showed some outcomes, and put this all together in this program called redefining ready. And, we'll get to that here in just a second. There we go. All right, so, we've got research-based metrics. This is a way to tell our story about our school and our students better than we have The first part of this that you'll see, and the first piece of this, is all about showing what we do well. But, the next piece of this is to use this information that we gather to make changes to our schools to improve our student outcomes. So, it's all about, actually, in the end, it's all about improving our programming. But, it's going to look like, at the beginning, kind of a way to show what we do well. So, AASA looked at research from lots of different institutions, and they came up with these metrics. And, that is the important thing. There we go. So, the college readiness indicators, students are college-ready if they meet either of the academic indicators or the standardized testing benchmarks listed below. And, these standardized testing benchmarks are not based on MCA, they're based on ACT. So, that's an important thing to realize out of this, is, you know, it's great that we've got the MCAs, they do a good job of showing how well we do on state standards, but the bigger picture is to look at ACT because that is normed across the nation and not just from Minnesota. So, the academic indicators, the first thing we look at is a student that has a 2.8 or higher GPA out of four, and one or more of these indicators, we're going to say is college-ready. So, advanced placement exam score of three-plus, advanced placement course grade of C or higher, a dual-credit English and/or math grade of a C or higher, a college developmental English and/or math course grade or C or higher, algebra-two course grade of C or higher. And, the last one, this is something that gets used in some schools, but we're not an international baccalaureate school, but if we were, we'd look at that exam score of a four-plus on that exam. So, if students meet that GPA requirement and one of those other indicators, based on the information, or based on the research by the AASA, they are college-ready. The career readiness indicators are a little bit different, as you can imagine. Students are career-ready if they have been identified, if they've identified a career interest and meet two of the behavioral and experiential benchmarks listed below. In addition, students entering the military must meet the passing scores on the ASFAB for each branch of the military. So, career cluster identified, so for example, we have a few career clusters that we identify some pathways for in our school. One of them is advanced manufacturing, you've heard a lot about our CTE programming lately, that's one of the, one of the career clusters. Another one is nursing. We're working on doing the same kind of thing with CNA programs in the school as we are with our CTE programming. But, after students have identified that career pathway, the metrics are 90% attendance in ninth grade, 25 hours of community service, and that could be individually or with a group, or with a, you know, a school co-curricular activity, workplace learning experience, industry credential, again, back to that dual-credit career pathway course, and participation in two or more co-curricular activities. So, if they meet two of those benchmarks, then based on the AASA's research, they would meet the career readiness indicators. So, here's some of the research that we've got from AASA. Course attendance is eight times more predictive of success in freshman year than eighth-grade test scores. So, we spend a lot of time talking about test scores, but it's actually attendance and being in school is quite a bit more predictive of success than those test scores. Students who successfully complete algebra-two are twice as likely to complete a four-year degree. Students who have a 2.8 GPA graduating high school have a 71% likelihood of reaching the American middle class. Students engaged in co-curricular activities are more likely to pursue higher education. Completing community service to fulfill class requirements enhances the average odds of college graduation by 22%. And, students who took an AP or IB course are found to be 17% more likely to persist in four-year colleges and 30% more likely to persist in two-year colleges. And, similar information was found for that dual-enrollment courses, too. So, eventually, what we're going to do is, we're going to put all this information together, and we're going to put it onto a report that might look something like this. This is a draft of what we've, what we've been kind of working on. And, we will be presenting this to you guys every fall for the preceding year's students. So, when we do our first presentation to you guys, probably in August, we will have, not only this year's graduates are 2022 graduates, we'll also have, go back and do the 2021 graduates and have them identified in those areas, too. So, you will see percentages of students who are college-ready, percentages of students who are career-ready. One thing we need to add to this is, we want to see a percentage of students who are both college and career-ready. And then, we will get some individual percentages based on the benchmarks and the standards that are listed down below there. So, those are some of the ones that were on the proceedings slide. So, that's really what redefining ready is. Again, this is a way for us to take all of these pieces that we've had, that information we've had before, but to put it in one place and present that, and then to use that information to do school improvement as well. So, that's all I've got for my presentation for you guys for right now. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
What does it mean when you say dual-credit?
So, a dual-credit course would be like, a student would get college credit and high school credit for the same course.
Oh, like when they do, like PSEO?
No, so, PSEO is at the college concurrent, so in Minnesota, it's referred to as concurrent enrollment, so it's taking college classes in the high school taught by one of our teachers.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, a good example of those are drafting class and our FabLab class, those are concurrent enrollment classes. Students get high school credit for those, and they get credit at Southeast State.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Any other question, Mr. Hodges?
Are they accounting for the potential of decreased ACT scores as?
Well, you know, one of the reasons I don't have last year's information up there is because I ran the information once, and then we had another session, and they clarified some things. So, I ran the information based on just the students who took the ACT.
Yeah.
And, they actually want that information based on all students in the grade.
Got it.
So, in Minnesota, we have to offer the ACT to all of our juniors in, in school, and that is actually coming up next week. But, our students don't have to take it if they don't want to. So, I've got to go back and figure those numbers into that.
I'm just curious, with so many institutions going test optional, I think, what that will?
It will be interesting to see, there's always kind of a lag between what happens at post-secondary to what filters down to high school. We haven't really seen too much of that yet, but I did have a student who I was talking to last week at lunch and just said, Eric, you know, you're looking forward to taking the ACT in a couple of weeks, and she said, I'm not taking it because the place I'm planning on going doesn't require it. My response was, are you sure you're going to get into the place that doesn't require it? Because you may have to have it as backup. So, we have, I think if I looked at it right, last year, Stephen, did we have about 80% of our students last year took the ACT?
Yep.
Our juniors. So, you know, that will, that will figure into those numbers, but when we get the calculations for those, we can kind of explain what those numbers mean as we go through there, too.
Is 80% typical?
You know, I'm trying to think, before, before it was required by the state, we typically had a pretty high percentage of students that would take it, because we've got actually a pretty high percentage of our students who'd go on to post-secondary institutions. So, it, that's probably about normal. We had a couple of years when Jennifer was the DAC that it was required for everybody, and everybody took it. But, things have changed a little bit at the state level, and now it's, we have to offer it to students, they don't have to take it if they don't want to.
Anything else, folks?
So, that's informative, I think it's, it's nice to see, and it's a holistic look at, you know, what students are ready for, and it's not dependent on the score that we know.
Right, I was, I was kind of excited when we started, when it was explained to us what it is, because it really does do a really good job of explaining not only just that standardized test score, but kind of the whole picture of students, and, and it will give us some really good opportunities for conversations about what we can improve on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
You sure you don't owe us this?
I'm quite sure. Thank you for the offer, though. Okay, public input. Comments are welcome from students, residents of the district, taxpayers of the district, people with children in the district, and employees of the district, and must relate to school business and not exceed five minutes. The board cannot engage in discussion during the comment period, but will take the information and find answers if that is appropriate. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public input. Individual complaints should be handled privately with the building administrators and/or the superintendent. As part of board protocol, it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassination at the board meeting. Okay, we'll open up for public input.
My name's Amber, I'm a parent, and I guess the only input I have is I read a Beacon article that they were looking for input on the proposed schedule for 2223. And, I mean, my input is, I don't appreciate having the school year start two weeks early, even though, yes, it would also get out two weeks early. I think that schools should start after Labor Day, that's just a personal opinion. And then, in regards to the readiness that we just heard about, I was wondering if there is a calculation in there, excuse me, for children on IDPs and things like that, if that's calculated into the metrics somehow?
Good question.
Just a curiosity.
Every, as far as redefining readiness goes, all students are looked at equally on that. So, we look at, it doesn't matter whether they're on IDP or not, they're all calculated into our numbers.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, we'll close public input. Consideration to approve the finance report, Mr. Davison.
Just got the short cash flow statement that we're going through here. Just kind of update from last meeting, we talked about going out for sale of the bonds. We've had conversations or conference call with Ayers and Moody's to start doing an update of our finance rating for the district. That paper could come back to us April 7th, and that's part of the tactic that'll go out for the bond sale. The bond sale is scheduled to happen on April 11th, so just an update quickly on that. In terms of the financial report, what you see here, just kind of breakdown through mid-June, we're working on the cash flow for next fiscal year. As you see through here, will stay positive throughout the remainder of the fiscal year, and that's projected to be the same for next year as well. But, just some items of note, you'll see as your property tax statements have come to or will be, at the end of May, you'll see our first half will be calendar year, '22 taxes starting to come in. So, if you have any questions on the financial report, I can do my best to answer what you have. See everything?
If not, I look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Rebecca, was that you?
That was me.
Second?
I'll second.
Brenda on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the finance report as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any one item, it can be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. As we usually start, Mr. Sampson likes to read the gifts, but in lieu of that, I would ask the clerk to maybe read the gifts.
Yeah, so, we'd like to express our gratitude to Spartan Nash for $1,000 for the humanities program, $500 from the Cannon Falls Fire Department for Interact, $250 from Goodhue County Pork Producers for FFA, $1,500 from Gemini for the fourth-grade Eagle Pluff field trip, which I think is this week, right? And then, $1,852 from the Farm Share Breakfast donation for FFA. Thank you.
Yes, our gratitude to all. So, if you want to take a moment to look over those, and if you have any questions, bring them out. When you are ready, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Katie?
Rebecca. We've really got to have one of us on your side, too.
Second, ma'am. That could help. Second by Luke, I can tell your voice. Any other discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda as shown, say aye.
Aye.
That is carried.
No old business under new business, probably our topic of the evening. As you recall from our last meeting, we have to make some changes in order to make sure of our construction needs get fulfilled on time. And, simply by backing the date, changing the date by two weeks, we did encounter some conversation, emails, concerns from staff. So, in keeping with that, there was a, I think, a committee named, would that be fair? Committee convened to look at the possibility of altering that or changing it, and Mr. Stahuski was on that committee, and we'd like to speak to that.
Well, the admin team was, too, and we had two other teachers on it as well. So, we went through and came up with a lot of different options, brainstormed a lot of different things that we saw as would be ideal and some not so ideal, and ended up coming up with three options for staff to vote on, the teachers to vote on, and ended up coming up with one kind of rising to the top out of that ranking with the majority of people interested in that, or not interested, reluctantly taking that on is a more likely comment. So, that would, that would be the big sticking point, and we ended up with a calendar very similar to the one that you had last week, or two weeks ago. That being said, there are some issues and things that teachers wanted me to make sure to share, and I thought I would go ahead and share those for them. That calendar was already in place two years ago, we started doing two years in advance, and there's a lot of people out there that are way better at planning than me that had trips planned just before school starts, weddings, vacations, a lot of different things, and that ends up kind of putting a, a little trouble in some of their planning. So, that was one of the things, some people have to opt out, some people just have to find another way to make it all work. So, I think the staff is aware of that, and they're, they're flexible in that way, reluctantly flexible. Also, you know, we had teachers that are already slated to have FMLA in the fall, and that's, that's going to end up, you know, they're going to have two extra weeks to have to take FMLA, and in some cases, that's a reduction in pay as well. So, that's a hardship that popped up. And, I've been here before with teachers with toddlers and babies trying to line up daycare, obviously, those are a lot of those things that availability providers, there's a certain routine, especially on this community that I've noticed where, where some take a certain time off and, and you don't have daycare providers. Fall sports, two-a-days practices, those are usually a thing with this two-week early thing, things don't exactly line up, so, impact on practices for, for the football boys, I don't think with, I think they do some early morning ones in volleyball, so that's adjusted. And then, you know, there's, there's going to be adjustments to school groups, community groups, many other issues that are going to have to be addressed, and it's going to, it's, it's a hard thing to try to adjust to when you're used to having it a certain way all the time. And, the big picture we know is, we need two weeks next summer to, to have a little buffer zone instead of having, you know, work-around construction. We've got, I think, 13 rooms here that are going to be torn to pieces over the summer in the tech area, or the, the, what is it called? CTE areas. So, those are all things that need to get done, and there's a certain timeframe, and, you know, before, I don't know, we had construction that was going on while we were in school, and that wasn't ideal either. So, that being said, it would be our recommendation as the CFEA and me as their representative to go ahead with, with the current two-week early start time with the adjustments. And, like I said, it's, not everyone's gung-ho about it, but we know it needs to be done, so.
Other short net committee, does anybody else have, have anything to say? Admin, you worked on this pretty hard.
I don't, we summed it up pretty nicely.
Yeah, the, there are pluses and minuses to all of the different options that we came up with, but ultimately, you know, the idea is that we don't get two weeks before school starts and say, oh, we're going to have to back school up two weeks or something like that. So, that would be much more disruptive to, to make that decision in, you know, in a short timeframe as opposed to make that right now.
We certainly acknowledge the inconvenience and, in some, in some cases hardships for people. It is a, it is a one-time thing, but for that one time, it's, it causes a lot of stress in people's lives, and we have to look at the negativity of that, and at the same time, we passed a bond issue, and we need to get to work on that, and there's, but there are other schools that have had, tried to work around it and failed. So, it's something we need to do. Anybody want to speak to it?
Yeah, I just had a, on the project itself, I think, you know, if we make this change to two weeks, how are we going to make sure that that two weeks has pretty much got this wrapped up? I mean, I just want to make sure we're, I know getting supplies is tough, but I think it looks tough if we make this change and it bleeds into the school year and...
The following year.
Yeah, I just, I think that would, we just got to somehow make sure that, you know, we work with the project manager to make sure this is on time, and, and I don't know, maybe Dave is that guy that helps manage it.
Well, I mean, I think we just have to trust that we have the right staff in place who are going to work with, you know, that end process. I mean, there's always, I mean, you're asking a question of can we control the uncontrollable, and, you know, we can't, we can't really predict any of that, but I think, you know, this is the two weeks that the, the company asked for, I believe, in that, in that conversation, and Carl Sanderson, I think, seems pretty confident that that's the time that they need to do it. They're the experts, they've done many, many projects, not just school facilities, but other types of things. And, I mean, I'm sure there's always a punch list or something that might hang around where there might be one or two things, but I think the two weeks is really to get the substantive things that would disrupt learning completed, so.
Anyone else?
Well, I just want to say, you know, I realize the hardship it places on people, and I really thought that the one week early might have been a good compromise, but I'm glad that the committee worked out all the different options and the teachers were given, the staff were given a chance to be polled or vote on it or whatever, so.
I also appreciate that it was rank ordered, because I think it gives a bigger picture of what, you know, not just like what the one thing you'll accept, but like sort of the range of, of perspectives, so.
And the SOUPs report, he has indicated his, his endorsement of the, of the calendar as shown as well. Does anyone care to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed calendar.
Motion by Rebecca. Second?
Second.
Second by Brenda. So, we have a motion, the second on the floor, to approve the updated 2223 calendar. Any other discussion? All in favor?
First, are we going to, so, if this goes through or gets, I'm, you know, I'm kind of with Brenda, I was kind of hoping for the one-and-one, and just for my own personal reasonings with, you know, kids going to college and that kind of thing, and I know there are some other people in that same situation, that it's going to really muck up our summer plans, those of us who are advanced planners. So, I, you know, I'm just struggling with it, but are they going to, are we going to get this out immediately to families? Or, like how, like if this gets passed, are we going to get it out to people so that they have the maximum amount of time to plan? Because I do know, I have a couple of friends and people who took off the week that Cannon Kids is closed, and now that week is going to be changed, I'm assuming, right? Because you still have to have that week closed before school starts. And, I know that in my place of employment, it's hard to switch your, your week off. So, you know, leaving people without those types of things, I just want to make sure we're giving people the most time possible to, to accommodate this inconvenience. So, just wanted to say that.
I would suppose that as soon as we okay this, if we do okay this, that'll be disseminated to the, the staff immediately and hopefully to the, to the greater community immediately. You're absolutely right, the more...
But, I am very, I'm very happy that we took the extra time and were able to get a little bit of input from, from the administration and staff and seeing where the majority lies, because that means a lot, too. So, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? So, we have a motion, the second, to approve the upcoming 2223 calendar with, with amendments, I guess. So, all in favor of that updated calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And, thank you for the work on that.
Yes, thank you.
Consideration to approve a leave request in accordance with teacher's master agreement, Article 10, Leavestads, Section 10. Childcare leave from August... Childcare leave from August 17th to January 2. It's pursuant to our contractual obligations here, so.
Make a motion to approve.
Rebecca on the motion. I'll second. Seconded by Luke. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the resolution reestablishing the combined polling place from January 1, 2022, to December 31st, 2022, following redistricting. I believe it's our obligation when there's a redistrict to affirm that we understand it and affirm the voting place, and it's little more than procedure because we won't change our voting place. So clerk, would you read the resolution?
Yeah.
First, we have the motion.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Katie on the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brenda. Okay, please read.
Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252, State of Minnesota, as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 205A11, the precincts and polling places for school district elections are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district which they, which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The Board hereby confirms those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. Two, section, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 205A11, the Board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for school district elections not held on the day of statewide election. Each combined polling place must be a polling place that has been designated by a county or municipality. The following combined polling places are established to serve the precincts specified for all school districts, special and general elections, not held on the same day as a statewide election, from January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022. Combined polling place, Cannon Falls City Hall, 918 River Road, Cannon Falls, Minnesota. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good. So we have a motion, the second. Further discussion? If not, requires a roll call vote.
Luke?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Rebecca, yes.
Okay, that passes by a five-zero vote. Small agenda this evening. We can use a small agenda sometime. So as far as the next meeting, it looks light so far, but I'm sure things will get packed in as the time, as time goes. So at this point in time, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait, wait. I had, I had an update. I was going to give a shout-out.
Do it.
Okay. You skipped the two parts.
So I wasn't at the meeting last time, because I was at the HVL tournament for the speech team, and I just wanted to give them a shout-out because I said that I would. And the first time ever, they took first place in all 13 categories and took home the team title, so it was very exciting for them, so. And I would say I was, a lot of really good sportsmanship, too, in that auditorium, because I think it could be kind of deflating to hear Cannon Falls repeated so many times, but there was a lot of good sportsmanship from the other schools and our students as well. So they're having a phenomenal season, but that was historic, so.
And this, this is a conference?
The HVL conference tournament, yeah. So previous board meeting, so.
And I'm just noticing this board meeting, April 11th, that's during our spring break, so I will not be here.
It's during spring break.
Yeah.
Send me a text or email.
Will other people be here? They need to be here?
I think so.
I won't be here either.
I mean, what about admin and everybody? Everybody will be gone.
So I don't know, do we need to move that meeting, is it?
I'll be here.
I was wondering.
We'll, we'll let you know.
Okay.
By email.
I just noticed it, because I know we leave on the 10th, so.
We need some conversation on it, for sure, it sounds like.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't want to lose a quorum.
Right.
So, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for the shout-out. I would look for a motion to adjourn from anyone.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Katie on the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Rebecca. You got it right, didn't you?
You got it.
Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished. Thank you.